All right, I will call to order the regular meeting in the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, February 26, 2019, and we'll start with roll call.
Tina Sharp.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
We'll start this evening with a special presentation, the annual tourism report. Kathy Kopp, executive director of the Platteville Regional Chamber of Commerce.
I have some nice light packets of heavy reading for you. I will leave this one with you, I forgot to bring an extra one. Thank you. I'm Kathy Kopp with the Platteville Regional Chamber, and we are the tourism entity for the city of Platteville and have been since 1995. Part of what we are required to do, and I'm always pleased to do, is, once a year, present an annual report of the activities that we have been involved in for the previous year. So, what is in your packet? On the left side is our current community guide, which is about ready to be wrapped up, and 2019 will be available sometime in April. The information on your right side are copies of all the print advertising that we did, and I want to draw your attention to, this is very close to the top, this black and white photo, I apologize, it's not in color, but for the first time, we were able to coordinate a large billboard that is on, located on Highway 20, coming, heading north into Galena, and it's promoting Platteville with outdoor recreation, and we were able to do that because of the additional room tax revenue that was generated last year. And this, this was the winter promotion, it changes out every quarter, so we will be changing that out and have a spring one, a summer one, and then again one in the fall. And, like I said, it's geared to outdoor recreation, trying to garner some of the folks that come into the Galena area from Chicago. The middle part of, the part that is three-hole punched, is the actual entity report, and it follows a very familiar format that has been approved by the city's tourism committee. We have been using this for a number of years now, and what we do is, we break down into components, the various activities that we do. The number-one charge that we have, and this comes from the lodging properties, is to maintain a year-round visitor center. So that takes up 55% of the budget. Now, when the city's tourism committee meets, I give an update, and they get a financial report, so this isn't the first time that this information has been presented. But as far as the statistics from the welcome center, we've had an increase of visitors, emails, the number that we, we take in has grown drastically. The phone calls are nonstop. We've mailed out over 240 visitor packets, which is not an exceptionally large number, except this number represents a fraction of the visitor packets, visitor information that we disperse, whether it's through email. We also ship very large quantities of our community guide to other welcome centers throughout the state, throughout the tri-state area. We have increased our social media presence, and we are up 10% over followers of that. And then, for the year 2018, about 35,000 brochures were distributed from our building. So the second category that we, we coordinate is destination marketing, which is the direct advertising. So that's, that's the copies, the print copies are in here, obviously, we can't show you what we did on radio, but if you'll look at that, the budget is, was projected at, this is what we were working off of, was 11% of the budget for a total of a little over $9,000. And I'll talk more about the, when I get to the financial of where that number actually ended up, but we do, it outlines the different commitments that we said we were going to do. And then, the third category is website and social media. We are currently upgrading our website again. We allocate about 6% of the tourism budget for website and social media, gives all the details, I definitely don't feel that we need, I need to read all of that to you. The calendar of events is something that we feel is very important, and we allocate about 4% of our budget to that. And what that means is, we find every possible available place to promote our events and the community of Platteville through other organizations' calendars. So, that's a, kind of an intense thing that we do, but it's very, very important that people really know that there are so many different things going on in Platteville. Public relations is the fifth category, and that's about 5% of the budget, and that means that we do press releases, we do packets for travel writers, we do anything that we can to, a lot of it is, pertains going to meetings and being involved, like with Grant County Tourism Council, Tri-State Tourism Council, but we do promote all of the community events, which is why you always hear us saying, "If anyone has an event, please let us know," because that is one of the things that we do. Our regional efforts, I already touched on a little bit, very involved in Grant County Tourism Council, Tri-State Tourism Council, on Tri-State Tourism, I serve as a Wisconsin vice president, and we obviously enjoy a very solid relationship with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. I am on the governor's tourism council, I was just reappointed this fall, and will be serving another three-year term doing that. The Tri-State Tourism piece is important because, because of our marketing budget, we would love, we see a lot of visitors now come, obviously, Chicago's a big market, but so is western Iowa, a lot of, Illinois is big, but we are starting to see stretches further west. We have a lot of visitors coming from Nebraska, Kansas, Missouri, all points west, and much more so than travelers coming from the east. We have people from the west that want to come to the Midwest. So, because of our location, that plays, it bodes well for us, because our first line of responsibility is to promote the city of Platteville, but because we are a travel Wisconsin center, a lot of people stop getting information on the state, but we, we go through a training process with our staff to make sure that it's Platteville priority, and definitely try to encourage people to spend a little more time here, stay overnight, go to the restaurants, do some shopping. Events and projects, the category number six is about 16% of the budget, and that is literally being involved in these miscellaneous and very important events that happen. We're sort of information central, we do a lot of coordination for the historic reenactment, we do a lot of coordination for dairy days. We have two ag tourism events that we're responsible for, the day on the farm and the fall harvest table dinner, that promotes local agriculture and local ag businesses. And then, we work closely with the Mining and Rallie Jameson Museum to promote the, the important work that they're doing. And then, the last category is contract administration, which is 3% of the budget, and that's just, covers the cost of doing reporting and that type of thing. Under the additional comments, I do want to note that on the inside of your packet, you have this little form on the right side. This is one page of about 50 from the report that the Department of Tourism hires to do once a year. This report is done, pulls out information by county, which is close as we, they don't have the availability of tracking exactly Platteville, but these numbers are from 2017. The 2018 numbers are always released the first part of June, or first part of May, during tourism week. But you can see that direct visitor spending in Grant County in 2017 was almost $44 million. Platteville can effectively claim a lion's share of that because of the number of lodging rooms that we have, and the restaurants, and shopping in general. So I'm anxious to see when those numbers come out, where we're at, and I'll reference that again in a minute when we talk about the financials. We are committed to a solid program in 2019, and part of what is in your packet is the chamber's strategic plan, and on the third page, second, I'm sorry, second page of that, it outlines six different priorities for us. One is to maintain the travel center, which is open year-round, and literally open in the summer from the first of May through the end of October, seven days a week. And then, we also have an objective to continue to support outdoor recreation in and around Platteville, and then, we also continue to work on building that community and regional support network, where there's a lot of cross-promotion opportunities. Fourth objective is to continue to enhance ag tourism events, they've been, they've proven to be very successful, very popular with the visitors and community members as well. And then, the fifth objective is something that is, Ben, we're just really starting to work on, and that is, we, we need a new Platteville map. The current map is no longer being printed, so, thank you, Catherine, who is helping us with the city part, on the reverse side of that map, we are proposing to put an enlarged map, there'll be a big fold-out map, an enlarged map of the campus. We have so many people that ask, "Where's parking lot nine? I need to go to parking lot two, or I need to go to this building." So, this, this should be an enormous help, and I know that a lot of people kind of poo-poo the idea of maps anymore, but as a welcome center, that is really not, the traveling public still demands maps. And being in the driftless area, when we have visitors that come, like, from Chicago, that rely on their cellphones, we tell them, "You're, you're entering the driftless area. May not have tower service everywhere you want to go, so here's a map." And they do appreciate that. The last objective for 2019 is we're, we really want to build programming and marketing to increase overnight stays in the off-season, and then, during the season, during the midweek, the business days. So weekends are, are pretty busy for the lodging properties, but we want to ramp that up and increase visitor attendance with that. And the, just before that, the last thing I want to talk to you about is the accountant's report, and in particular, on page two, the revenue that was generated related from room tax, the budget that I just walked through with the percentages that we had tagged, was based on the previous year's budget of $87,500. You'll note that at the end of 2018, instead of 87,500, the 70% that came to the tourism entity was 122,682. That's a 40% plus increase. So what the tourism council did was, they put more money into direct marketing, the extra funds went to direct marketing. So, instead of a $9,000 advertising budget, we were able to boost that to over $41,000. So, the fruits of our labors with the marketing, a lot of times, is seen down the road, but the, the budget that we put together for 2019 is that one, it's, I think we decided to go a little more conservative, and we were working on a budget of $110,000, just in case there is a drop. But, these are the expenses, so it's the first time we have ever had that kind of a marketing budget. And so, our commitment to the lodging properties in particular, that any additional funds over the budget would go to direct marketing, and that's what, what we did with that, the number of $41,000. So, looking ahead to 2019, we have some significant things that we're going to be doing. We're totally redoing the, the welcome center parking lot, we have, we're going to be adding a, a bike rack and a handicap-accessible picnic table on the new concrete walkway that we put in a year ago on the east side of the property. And then, we have, we're going to be celebrating the 15th anniversary of Katie's Garden during Hometown Festival Week. Katie's Garden is a huge draw for a lot of people. We're going to be celebrating National Tourism Week with an event early in May, we'll be giving you more details as that comes up, but a lot of the programming that events are moving into definitely annual mode. The ag tourism events that we started, these will be the, the third and fourth year of these events, that we weren't sure how they were going to be received, or how well-attended, and everything looks quite rosy. And I don't have the last tourism room tax report that just came out for fourth quarter 2018, but when you compare, what, to the fourth quarter 2018 to 2017, that number alone, and keep in mind, it's October, November, and December, and those are kind of iffy months, was up another 40%. So, we're excited, and the committee's working really hard to garner new opportunities for marketing, but the only change with the budget is really, we're hoping to be able to continue to increase the direct marketing costs, opportunities that, that are out there. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody want to come volunteer? We always need volunteers.
Okay, there's a lot of information, I'm sure some of us will take a little time to look it over, but thank you, it looks very detailed. Anybody have any questions or comments at this point?
Thank you for all your work.
Yep, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going on to our first public hearing this evening, conditional use permit, intensive home occupation at 345 Bailey Avenue, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, the property owner at 345 Bailey Avenue has already applied for and received a kennel license, which allows him to have more than four dogs, between four and 10 dogs, on the property. Those would be for his own, his own dogs, but as part of that, the application, he's also requested approval to have a breeding and boarding kennel on the property, so he'd breed his own puppies, sell, his own dogs, sell those puppies, and then board dogs for other people for a fee. So under our regulations, that triggers a, what would be a business in a residential use, so that would be considered a home occupation. And in the zoning ordinance, we have two types of home occupations, we have kind of a standard or customary home occupation, which typically, we, we have quite a few of those, it's typically people that have a, a home-based business that's done over the internet, phone service, that type of thing, data entry, that really doesn't involve anybody besides the, the owner of that property, the resident of that property, people don't come to the property, et cetera. So that is allowed without any kind of approval. And then, there are other uses that trigger a review, and it's be considered intensive home occupation. Kind of the, the two main differences that trigger the intensive review would be if there's other people besides a resident of that property that are employee of that business, that they have to come to that property on a regular basis as part of that business, and then, if the business includes retail sales or services that require the client or customer to come to that property for business purposes on a kind of a regular routine basis. So, in those situations, it's considered intensive home occupation and requires approval of a conditional use permit. So for this particular request, with the breeding and boarding, obviously, the selling of the puppies, the customers are going to come look at the dogs before they want to purchase them, and then they'll be, as part of the boarding operation, they'd be dropping off their dogs for boarding and then picking them up later, so you're going to have that situation that would require that intensive home occupation category. For the facility itself, he's already installed some kennels, enclosures in the backyard of the property, the entire backyard is fenced in already, it was done prior to this request. Each of those kennel structures is at least 50 feet away from an adjoining residence, which meets our kennel standards, and then, he'll also have an area, a room inside the house that would be used to keep the boarded dogs. There are no set hours of operation, it's people, you know, when, when they come up, make a request, they drop their dogs off, pick them up as needed. There are no other employees of the business besides the residents, and there is parking available in the driveway for people that come and go to that property. There are some other standards, and I did include the, the home occupation standards in your, in your packet, but I kind of mentioned the, the key standards for that. As far as a conditional use permit, before that should be considered, it should be determined that the uses and structures are in accordance with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, and are found not to be hazardous, harmful, offensive, or otherwise adverse to the environment or the value of the neighborhood or the community. And for intensive home occupations, a standard is included that no use shall create smoke, odor, glare, noise, dust, vibration, fire hazard, electrical interference, excess trash, or any nuisance not normally associated with the usual, usual residential use in the district. So, there are some concerns that have come up with this proposed use with the kennel operation. Obviously, if it's not maintained or operated property there, properly, there is the potential for odor coming from the property, and then, obviously, the, the barking dog concern has been raised. Barking dogs do have the obvious potential to create noise problems for the neighborhood that could negatively impact the entire neighborhood, not just adjacent properties. So based on the concerns, staff has recommended denial of this request, it just seems more appropriate to have that type of use in a non-residential location. Alternatively, if the, the council deems it a use that would be worth considering, we would recommend you approve it for basically a one-year, essentially a trial period, and then, to determine, you know, what issues come up, if any, during that period of time, and then, we could possibly place some additional conditions on that use for, going forward. So that would be our recommendation. Any questions?
Questions from any council member?
As far as the additional, the one year, who would monitor that? How would you determine what's going on? Would you rely upon complaints from neighbors?
Um, I think-
Would you go out as staff members?
I think it would be a combination of the two. You know, we could keep an eye on it as best as we could, but obviously, the neighbors are going to be there more than we would be, and if we did receive complaints, that, that would give us an obvious indication if there are issues and what those issues may
Any other questions from any council member at this point?
I'm wondering if the attorney could clarify, a conditional use permit is issued for a specific person and a specific business, is that correct?
No, unlike a liquor license, so those, a conditional use permit is issued for the property. So if, for instance, you could have a situation where the applicant is operating the kennel and gets divorced, and the spouse remains at that location and operates the kennel. Now, it's issued for, it's property-specific, not person-specific.
Property-specific, not person-specific?
Correct.
And if you, if you do not put expiration date on a conditional use permit when it's issued initially, can you ever put an expiration date on it? All right, let's say the situation, let's say this conditional, this permit was issued, and there was some change in ownership or whatever, that person doesn't, that the new person doesn't have to come back, but you also, I assume, cannot then impose a expiration date?
Correct. You could, you can always change the conditions or rules, but just like in any zoning change, as it existed prior to your change would be grandfathered. So, if you tried to put a term on it, that would not be effective, because the, the person would be grandfathered from that term.
The license, be potentially pulled if it wasn't, like, kept up or something? Like, say the kennel just got out of hand?
Well-
Without an expiration on it?
If there's no, the real point of conditional use permits is it, it permits the council to impose conditions that, if this were just a permitted use, you couldn't impose conditions. You know, if somebody came to you and said, you know, "We'd like to have a, I don't know, a home accounting business in this," and if it were a permitted use as opposed to a conditionally permitted use, you couldn't impose conditions. That's their right, they're in the proper zoning code, you have to say, "Okay, you, you can do it." A conditional use permit is something that, is not outright prohibited in that zoning district, but it's not outright permitted either. It's, it's conditionally permitted if the council decides to permit it, and you can impose any reasonable conditions on that. So oftentimes, what you'll see are conditions that say, limit the hours of operation, limit it only to indoors, limit it to no exterior lighting, you will often have a, a sunset provision in it, you usually have a condition that city staff can inspect the property upon reasonable notice, because keep in mind, if you don't have that condition, it, it is private property, you would need a warrant to go, for staff to go in there and inspect. So, it, I think, Mr. Carroll's absolutely right, the threshold question for you is, does it meet the standards under your zoning code? I, I just saw too here that, under your code, home occupations can only be conducted in the enclosed area, in the structure itself. That would preclude sort of outdoor dog runs, that sort of thing, and it shall not create any smoke, odor, glare, noise, dust, vibration, or nuisance. There's certainly, it may be debatable from the applicant's standpoint, but- but it's certainly a consideration that those things could occur here. So I think the threshold question for you is, is this thing even compliant with your standards? If you determine it's not, then the person's not entitled to a conditional use permit. If you determine that it is, with properly crafted conditions, it could conform to your requirements under the code, then the next step would be to impose those conditions. In practice, that's not normally done by the city council at this, sort of on the fly in a meeting. What I would advise you to do, if you were inclined to consider granting it with conditions, would be to refer it back to staff for consideration of whatever conditions you would be, in the staff's view, appropriate. You can always impose whatever reasonable conditions you want, whether the staff recommends them or not. Those conditions are just, they're just usually formulate, they take time to formulate, I guess. So I, my advice to you would be, right now, make a decision as to whether or not this is even an appropriate use in this area. If you determine not, deny the conditional use. If you determine it is or could be, refer it back to staff for preparation of appropriate conditions.
And just to verify, the kennel permit is a separate, a whole separate thing? So the kennel permit and the conditional use are really two separate items?
That's correct, yes.
So in terms of the kennel, that's a, that's a permit that is issued, and I don't know who inspects or whatever for that kennel permit. But this is, this really doesn't have much to do with the permitting of a kennel as much as it does to have a conditional use on the property.
That's accurate. Kennel is a bit of a misnomer in this context. The kennel license simply allows a resident in Platteville to have up to a certain number of animals. It's just a license as to the number of animals. That's a, those are, the threshold to get that is fairly minimal. The question here really isn't, can this person keep animals there? He has a kennel license, he could keep up to twelve of his own dogs there. The issue here, as in so many conditional use permits, is, is it appropriate to allow him to conduct a business at this location?
So from the things that you commented about that he might do, the outdoor run for dogs that he is getting paid for to care for becomes a problem? Was there some thing else in the list of items that you mentioned?
It is. I think for him to meet these standards in your zoning code, it's gonna have to be, the entire business will have to be operated in the enclosed structure. So he will, he would not be able to have outdoor dog runs, be able to allow the dogs to run in the backyard, that sort of thing. In addition, you would make the finding, but your code requires that this use is not going to create smoke, odor, glare, noise, dust, vibration, fire hazard, trash, or any other nuisance. I think the conceivable considerations here would be noise from the dog barking, odor from the dog barking, dust perhaps, if the dogs were allowed outside contrary to the standards. So normally, what I see in these kind of things, to the extent you would be inclined to conditionally grant this, there are conditions that would limit the hours of operation. Any dog shall only be kennelled there for profit between the hours of eight and six, so that you don't have a concern of barking dogs at eleven o'clock at night, so to speak. You could limit the number of dogs. And you could do that notwithstanding the fact that the kennel license grants him, I think it's up to twelve. Ten, is it ten? For purposes of the conditional use permit, you could limit it to five if you wanted to. He's free to keep ten of his own dogs there, but if you were to make that a condition, he could only board five. So you could limit the number of dogs. You could limit the breed of dogs if you wanted. You could limit it to dogs and not other animals. Any condition that is reasonably related to the concerns that are presented can be, you can impose conditions on the applicant for that.
So I'm thinking about, under zoning, there's specifications for dogs and what kind of it takes for law enforcement to be involved, for it to be declared a nuisance and dealing with it that way. What if you, can we add a stipulation of so many declared nuisance complaints? But how can that be in a stipulation that it is about, I mean, how do you regulate? If it's one neighbor calling ten times, or ten neighbors concerned? But how do we deal with complaints if that's part of the?
You could do it that way. You could impose a sort of, you know, the, the CUP is revoked upon three convictions of ordinance violation, something like that if you wanted to. The problem I generally see with those is, what is the, what is the point at which it counts? Does it require conviction? Does it require arrest? Does it require just a complaint? That sort of thing. So that's what makes those somewhat problematic. The other problematic part with a condition like that is, keep in mind, if a neighbor complains, generally, and I can't speak for this police department, but usually in most communities, they will go out there and they won't cite initially. You know, they will try to work with the person to get compliance. So oftentimes, you could have two or three incidents of the neighbor complaining before there's actually a citation issued. The citation's issued, it's returnable to municipal court. A month later, person comes in and pleads not guilty. It's scheduled for a pre-trial conference with the prosecutor a month after that. They don't reach a plea bargain, so it's scheduled for trial two months after that. So you could end up in a protracted period of time where, by the time you revoke the CUP, a year could have transpired from the time the barking or whatever happened. From the perspective of the neighbors, that gets to be very problematic. A way to solve all of that, one way to do it is sort of as Mr. Carroll had suggested, you sunset it. There are no standards, there's no threshold standards. It will just be revisited in a twelve-month period of time. And you, as the arbiter, will decide if it's one complaint, three complaints, five complaints, whatever. That gives you a little more flexibility. I would say the downside to that approach is if this kennel opens and it's not well-run, you're all but certainly subjecting the neighbors to a year's worth of problems.
Questions from the council?
I have a question about what's constructed in the backyard. The first Saturday after the council meeting, two weeks ago, I unannounced stopped at the property here, and Mr. Winch was out there, and I got a tour of the house and the outside property. So my first question is, the structures that were built outside there, are they intended as a run, or it is simply a kennel? Is that?
Mr. Winch will be coming up to-
He'll be coming up, so I want to have that question answered. So it looks like they were new structures that were constructed. And in looking at this situation, I have come to the conclusion that I would be willing to permit one year of usage as requested. So that's my thinking at the present time.
All right, well, we're going to give the applicant an opportunity to speak unless anyone else has questions from-
Well, I just have a comment. It's my understanding, dogs under Wisconsin law, in these kinds of situations, have to be outside for a short period of time to get sun and fresh air. So I don't know how that's gonna fit into this criteria if we limit things to be just an inside run. So that's just my comment on that particular situation. That's part of Wisconsin rules and regulations that a dog needs to be outside for a short period of time. So I just want to mention that.
All right. Next is applicant's statement. Mr. Winch, if you would like to come up to the podium. Give you a name and your address, please. And actually, before you do that, I would like to note that Mr. Winch has asked to speak in favor, so that would be the next category, so.
So I guess Dan Winch is my name, 345 Bailey Avenue. The property in question here is where I live. I guess I'd like to start by addressing your question, Barbara. You asked, what happens if there's a divorce or something of that nature? The property is in my name only, the business is in my name only. So if I ever do sell the property, this conditional use permit, I would be happy to speak with you guys and have it removed or whatnot at that time. It's won't be an issue of it passing on to someone else and there being an issue. So I guess I'd like to give you a little history on how we got to this point. So five years ago, we started the idea of boarding and breeding. We started small, and obviously, we've been working our way up. About a year ago, we went and talked to City Hall, and we asked, at some point, we're gonna need to keep additional puppies. So how do we handle that? How do we continue our business? And City Hall said, it's not a problem. Your backyard is large enough in such a way that the kennels can be put back there, and it'll comply. So based on that knowledge, we invested heavily in a back deck. We invested heavily in the required kennels that would be per the ordinance. And we submitted our paperwork. In order to, another question that was asked is, who inspects it? And the answer is, the building inspector has to come out, the county health department has to come out, and a licensed veterinarian has to come out. So we had all those people come out. They all said it looks great. And so we submitted the paperwork. And it was only then, only after we'd spent thousands of dollars building these outdoor runs and kennels, they're thirty square foot, not run, but kennel, it was only at that point that we were told, wait, 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 you need this conditional use permit. So that's why I'm here now, is I'm just trying to be the most legit I can be here. Now, bear in mind that there are, as I presented the last week, there are three other individuals doing this exact same thing, out of their homes within five blocks of us. To which, I defer the question to Lieutenant Bruce. When is the last time you, or anyone in the police department, issued a citation for somebody not having a conditional use permit when it was required? Okay, so.
It's not something that I investigate or please want to investigate, it's something I believe that the staff at City Hall investigate.
Okay. All right. I guess I'd like to also speak to what other people have said about this. On our Rover, we have a five-star rating. That means that everyone who's ever reviewed us as a dog sitter has given us a five-star perfect rating. They've said things like, David said, excellent, treated my dog wonderfully and gave regular updates. Kathy said, wonderful dog sitter, I would highly recommend Dan as anyone's dog sitter. Matt and Kendra, Boomer had a great time with Dan, we appreciate. He took the time to do a meet and greet beforehand and showed us around the space. When we picked up Boomer, it was clear that he had a good time and he was tuckered out. Thanks again. Dan did a great, this is Marilyn, Dan did a great job with our dog. We really appreciate his services and highly recommend him for boarding services. Donita, Molly had a great time playing with the other dogs. The photos and videos were very fun to receive. I highly recommend Dan. Tracy, it went, it went well, and they had fun with other dogs and animals. Dan even laughed when he saw that one was afraid to go up the stairs. He had to carry Brewer up the stairs, such a big baby, yay, Dan. And then this other person, oh, here we go, it doesn't have the name on it, must be on the bottom of this other page. Our Bo had a wonderful time with Dan and Marissa. They sent us pictures and updates about their experience. Our son had, was very glad to leave them for the Thanksgiving holiday in a family setting. We definitely will use Dan and Marissa again in the future. Zoe, Dan sent an update and a photo of how Remus was doing and the first night, and then kept us in touch throughout the weekend. Remus came home and seemed truly tuckered out. We will definitely stay with Dan again. Thank you, Dan. So as you can see, we have a lot of people here who do appreciate the services. In the community, one person here also posted on Facebook. His comments were, I've been there, and it's a clean environment, very well-kept. One of our neighbors here, who was unable to make it tonight, wrote up a little letter here, and I'll read that to you. This is the neighbor Kitty Corner, within the one hundred-foot radius that all the letters were sent out to. She writes, to whom it may concern, I was asked to write a letter in regards to Dan Winch and his wish to operate a kennel service from his place of residence. It is my understanding that the concern of increased traffic flow was brought up a few weeks ago at a city meeting. I do not feel that this would warrant a traffic issue in our neighborhood. We experience an increase in traffic in our general neighborhood once UWP is back in session in the fall and throughout various times of the year based on UWP's calendar. So I do not feel that the proposed traffic increase based on Mr. Winch's wishes to operate his service would be noticeable. To address the issue of barking, I can honestly say that I cannot attest to this concern. We are rarely home due to many out-of-town commitments. We live in a neighborhood that has dogs around, and many people walk the dogs in our neighborhood, and dogs do bark. If there is or has been excessive barking in the area, I'm confident that this issue has been addressed and taken care of. I do not have any safety issues or concerns in the matter at hand. My children will go sometimes to play with Dan and his daughter, play with Dan's daughter, and I have never been hesitant to send them over. They also like to go and check on the puppies. What makes a neighborhood great is a sense of community, and I feel that our neighborhood is great because the people around care for one another and participate in community life. Now, I also stopped over and talked to the neighbor behind us, and she says that she would sure, she would sure hate to lose us as a neighbor, were her exact, her exact words. Our neighbor on the other side frequently helps us when we need someone to watch our dogs if we ever do leave. He took our dogs for walks. I mean, he's definitely in support of what we're doing. And Lucind is also here tonight to speak. So the neighbors definitely enjoy the dogs, and it's never been an issue. Again, we've been doing this for five years, and, Sina, you're a-
Your neighbor.
You're our neighbor. What are your thoughts?
I went there today to go check it out, and it was everything you said it was. I've never had a problem with it. I really like when you walk past my house with the puppies. They're really cute. So you said that you've been boarding dogs already?
Right.
So, and I've never, I mean, I've heard dogs bark like a couple times, but like my dogs are bashes, so. Nothing kept me up, nothing that was like girly, or, you know, it was all fine. Yeah, and I've always seen your dogs, and they're always healthy and happy, and it's, yeah. Isn't that nuisance to me, and I live with person like a block of him?
Okay. Glad to hear that. The, I guess the question I have of our lawyer here, you made mention of having it be an all indoors type of thing. First off, dogs do need to go out and go to the bathroom. Second, if it's an all indoors type of thing, why would the city require us to have kennels that cost thousands of dollars installed?
Well, I can only speak to the conditions. Section twenty-two point oh six sub B imposes nine standards for home occupations. The first one is, home occupation shall be conducted only within the enclosed area of the dwelling unit or the garage. No more than seventy, no more than twenty-five percent of a principal structure or seventy-five percent of an accessory structure may be dedicated to a home occupation. No accessory building may be built, altered, or used primarily for use in the home occupation. So that's a requirement of the zoning code, that- So that's a requirement of the zoning code, that that's not something that is malleable or could be conditionally approved. Keep in mind, this code is not written for one specific use. It wasn't written for dog kennels. It is written to apply to all conditional use, all customary home occupations and intensive home occupations. So that's why I say, I understand what you're saying, sir, and I understand the alder's point that, and I think she's right, that there are administrative regulations that require that the dogs be outside. I don't see how you're gonna be able to comply with that administrative requirement and also comply with the zoning code requirement that you conduct home occupations indoors. And I will say, this is not an uncommon requirement at all. Nearly all CUP requirements have that. You don't want people having archery ranges conditionally permitted. You don't want to have people flying model rockets as a business outside. So that's a very common requirement, say, if we're gonna allow you to conduct a home occupation in an area where it's only conditionally permitted, you have to do it indoors. And that's why nearly always those type of businesses are accountants and bookkeepers and that sort of thing. Because it can all be done indoors. I, to answer your question, my personal view, I don't see how you're gonna be able to comply with that.
So I promise I won't strap any dogs to any rockets if that applies.
I have a question for you, if that's okay. Yeah, okay. So I heard you say something about like seventy-five percent of the structure or something can be outside or can, what was that?
No, there's, they're talking about, there's the principal structure and any accessory structure. So a detached garage, a shed, something like that.
Gotcha.
No more than twenty-five percent of the principal structure, the house.
Okay.
Can be dedicated for kenneling and no more than seventy-five percent of any accessory structure can be dedicated to kenneling.
And then I have an additional question. So you said the reason why this ordinance is to cover a wide range of things. Say we did want to have this work, what could we do to make sure that he's still following the ordinances? Because he's not having an archery range in his backyard, but then his dogs can get outside. You know, like, I understand that they need the laws to cover everything, but there's part of, can it be part of the that their dogs are allowed to be outside? Would that be a thing?
No, because your code prohibits it. So your choices are really, to allow him to lawfully obtain this, you could certainly change the ordinance. City Council can amend the, I mean, it's a zoning code, so you would have to go through the zoning code amendment process, public hearing, plan commissioner review, that sort of thing. But you could do that to change this requirement. This change, a change if you were to do that would be zoning code-wide. You know, you can't just grant a special permit for him, that's spot zoning. The second way I suppose he could do it is he could apply for a variance. And if he obtained the variance, then he'd be able to lawfully do it as well.
So could he, say we approve something tonight, could he be able to do that and then go get the variance? Or would he have to bring the variance forward first?
No, the council could grant the CUP and one of the conditions would be that the applicant obtains a variance permitting this use.
And then my last question is, if he decides, if you wanted to just breed dogs and not board dogs, would he have to have?
Well, what implicates the CUP requirement is doing it as a business. He's free to keep his own dogs there and he's free to breed his own dogs for his own personal use. But if he's gonna sell them, then it's a business and then he needs the CUP. So I think his choices are, to your question, if you wanted to breed them for profit, he would have to either obtain the CUP variance or do it at a different location. Because that's really the point here and I don't mean to be disingenuous to you at all, sir. You could run the best business in the world and everything else. The issue is, is that business appropriate at this location?
If it isn't, why would there even be an option for a commercial kennel in this kind of situation? Why would that be in the law?
Conditional use permits are, they're almost a feature of every zoning code because it's impossible when you're drafting a zoning code to anticipate every single use property could be used to. So the standard way that we do it is we prohibit certain uses, we permit certain uses, and then in between, we conditionally permit things. And dog kennels would be one of the conditionally permitted ones.
So if I may, there might be a third option here. There are laws that are unenforceable and they're written all the time. They're just not enforced. And I mean, right now, I don't see anyone going out and making sure that everyone has conditional use permits. There are no tickets that are being submitted as far as I'm aware for people who are running kennels and stuff like that or other home occupations like watching children and stuff like that. And that's not the route that I'm recommending, but I'm not saying it's outside of the realm of possibility either.
That was a question for me, do you need a conditional use permit to run a daycare?
Under state statute, if you have watched children in your home, you're legally allowed to have up to eight and we have to treat it as a single-family home. If you get more than that, then there would be a requirement that it kicks in as a different standard and we could require approval.
And are there ones granted in this town that obviously the children are using outdoor space under this?
Like I said, the ones that I'm aware of, they have less than eight children, so we can't enforce specific requirements or standards on those uses. We have some licensed daycares that are larger than that, that I know one in particular did have to obtain a conditional use permit.
And the kids could play outside?
Excuse me?
The kids could play outside.
Oh, absolutely. But the one I'm talking about was a conditional use, but it's not in a residential area. But it was a conditional use. We have lots of home occupations in this city, some that did not require approval, some that did require approval and did receive approval. As far as enforcement, we have had instances where we were made aware of situations where they were running a business out of their home. I don't recall ever getting to a citation mode, but they did have to go through the approval process when we became aware of it.
Anything else, Mr. Winch? Otherwise, we are going to go on to the next section, would be public statements in favor and that would be if you have anything else you'd like to add at this time.
Not at this time.
Okay. We do have one other person who's asked to speak. I'm sorry, I'm not very good at reading handwriting, sometimes Champion, maybe is your last name?
Yeah.
If you will come up and give your name and your address, please. And asking to speak in favor.
Hi, I'm Lucinda Champion, three seven five Bailey Avenue, I'm right next door to Dan. When I moved there, it'll be two years this coming July, I couldn't have asked for a better neighbor, actually, when I stopped in because I went from the country coming to town. So it was like, wasn't really something I wanted to do. I have never had any issues with any of his dogs or anything. I've been there to help him with puppies that were being born because they were out of town one day. Kennels in the house are totally clean, outside's fine. I have dogs myself, I think almost everybody in the neighborhood has a dog in this household or in that neighborhood. Barking hasn't been an issue, I mean, my dog barks, dogs bark. Usually he's telling me he wants in the house. But it's never been like an ongoing two, three hours of barking going on, it's never been in the middle of the night. So I don't see an issue with this happening. I just, I think it would be a good thing for the neighborhood. The college kids love having all the dogs in the neighbors because they come over and they see all the puppies, it relaxes them, they'll take them for walks, you know, so. That's what a lot of the neighborhood is, is a lot of rentals as well for the college students. I've never heard anybody say anything bad about any of the dogs in the neighborhood. As far as the business, I got some questions myself. What are some businesses that didn't need that home business, like, that didn't need one versus did need one? What type of businesses don't need it then? Obviously, the childcare for less than eight, but what are some of the other ones? Because I'm confused with that myself. And so I guess, I'd say Dan should have an opportunity, give him the year, let him prove himself and then you can reevaluate it, at least that much. I mean, I think that's only fair to let a guy try to run his business.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else registered to speak in favor. We do have one person who's asked to register and speak against, Michael Ostros.
Do I have to do the name and address then?
Name and address, please.
You bet, okay. Michael Ostros, five 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 North Chestnut Street here in Platteville. I feel like I'm gonna get a ton of dirty looks here based on all the questions. Because I'm speaking as opposed to this, I want to open by saying, first of all, I am a dog lover. I do operate a small business and I have nothing against either of those. I have a lot of property in the neighborhood, I've owned it for almost twenty years now. Currently, it is a rental, though it has been my primary residence from time to time. I like the idea, coming from a small business standpoint, of what you're doing. I have dogs myself, I struggle finding a place to board them. I actually didn't even know you existed until I got the letter from the city. So maybe that's a marketing issue on your part, but it's honest to God truth. And though I do believe you have the best of intentions personally, and obviously I've heard that from some of the neighbors and even maybe some of the city council members, and most likely the best of intentions professionally, this is not a location that is zoned for this. This is not a location that is set up for this. I happen to agree, happy or not, with most of the stuff Joe and the city attorney said. And that though this is a great idea and something Platteville does desperately need, it probably should be done in a location that's better suited than this particular location. Now, I, maybe the packet the city has actually has a map and everything that shows where this location is. This location is a couple of blocks from downtown and a couple of blocks from campus. It is a rental neighborhood, it is also a neighborhood that does have small families, it does have retirees in the neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that is actually meeting economically what the city wants from affordable housing in the neighborhood and is an up and coming neighborhood and probably one of the reasons you moved there five years ago. And though I don't have any objection to what you're doing, I think that it just doesn't meet the ordinance and what the city's looking at doing with it. And if the city was willing to turn around and say, well, we'll give you conditional use for one year, based on everything I've heard tonight, I don't know how you enforce that, I don't know how you set up the rules, who pays for the enforcement? Does the city pay for that? Is it objective? I personally have a neighbor whose dog, not in this neighborhood, different neighborhood, drives me crazy every night and I can't seem to get anything done about it. So though I do believe all the positive things and I do believe that this is something Platteville needs, this is something that should be done in appropriately zoned neighborhood and that should be done as an appropriately zoned business as a result. I guess the last thing I'll say beyond the economic stuff is that it's real easy for everybody to, because people like dogs, people want to do this. And I guess I can ask people on the council other than Sina, because she lives in the neighborhood, is this something you would truly want to deal with in your neighborhood? Good, bad, or indifferent? Just is it something sitting there that you would want to make the vote on? I know personally I wouldn't again and I love dogs. So unless anybody has any questions for me, I'll just take my dirty looks and go sit down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next will be public statements in general. I don't know if anyone did not register, this, the little green sheets on the table over there, but I don't see anybody out there who wants to speak on this otherwise.
We do have one more. No, you're.
This is still the dog thing. Yeah, you Angela?
Yes.
Okay, sure, we'll let you go ahead and make a comment, that's fine. Give your name and your address, please.
My name is Angela Jones.
In the microphone, please, Angela.
You've never done one of these before, I apologize. My name is Angela Jones at two ten North Bonson Street. What about a year condition with the approval that he gets a variance that he can establish a business if he was to look at and zone a different location in the future? But this would give him a chance and an opportunity to legitimately do what he wants to do, save revenue of doing it and possibly invest in a location where it would not be a problem for the city? I don't know. If a variance will give him a one-year thing on it and they can do it, he's already been doing it for five years. I've never been to one of these, I didn't know this was on the agenda and this is just some common thinking from me. So if the variance will give him the leniency of the zoning ordinance with the conditions that you guys are allowed to stipulate in there, give him a year with the exception that he gets the variance and also give him an eighteen-month conditional of you have to find somewhere else if it doesn't work or if you guys choose to not change the zone. So like, I think everybody could win here. It really doesn't seem like that big of a problem to me. My kids love dogs. I, Sina, I've met her through my best friend Philip and he walks dogs, his friend Janet walks dogs. Every time anybody with dogs comes by my house, all three of my kids are like, oh my gosh, can I pet your dog? Can I love it? Because I can't have animals where I'm at, it's against my rent policy. So they get love and affection from animals that we don't have, because we're not allowed to have them, by people walking their dogs around the community. What's a couple more smiling faces? What's a couple more happy families and kids just walking around? What's some volunteer work for some teenagers or community service with walking dogs out of kennel? There's a whole lot of really good possibilities with this. That's just, that's the only comment I have.
Thank you. Actually, there's no place for the applicant to come back up, so. I think we've said everything that needs to be said. Now, as council discussion, if a council member has a question, Dan, I'll certainly let you come back up, but. Council discussion?
Well, first of all, I feel pretty dumb. That's the only way I can put it. Because when I read the specific standards, I immediately skipped to intensive home occupations and began to read one, two, three, four, five, six and never read the little paragraph that says above that, intensive home occupations are a conditional use in all residential, they are subject to all requirements for a home occupation. So I never bothered to read the nine conditions above. So that makes me not real smart. And so as I now see those conditions above, it's very interesting that the first one is that a home occupation has to be conducted with an enclosed area of the dwelling unit or garage. So right off, we don't really have, in my opinion, a choice other than the choice that has, other than a variance route. Now, I don't know much about a variance. Is a variance granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals, is that?
Yes.
So it comes before the Board of Zoning Appeals? And then is a variance, like a variance on the property forever? Or is the variance, I mean, I'm gonna have the same questions about a variance that I had about a conditional use permit.
Right, and I should have been more clear when I even mentioned that because a variance is not something that's just can be unilaterally granted. There are legal requirements that the applicant would have to meet to get a variance. They're all, in all frankness, they're not easy to overcome. It has to be due, they're, I don't.
Economic, yeah.
And it has to be due to something beyond the applicant's control, you know, peculiar to the property. I think he would have a hard time meeting the variance and I think from a policy standpoint, that would be difficult because as Joe says, it then runs with the land. That is a permanent attribute of that parcel. So this gentleman could move away, die, whatever. Anybody else could buy that property and they could open a kennel because it has a variance to permit kennel operation there.
So a variance doesn't allow the expiration date or anything else? It becomes a permanent, kind of a permanent situation?
Correct. It's a, literally a variant. It's a, literally, a variance from the requirements of the zoning code.
Any other discussion by the council members?
In answer to the question, would I want this in my neighborhood, I definitely sit on that thought. I think that's the way, to be fair, about handing these decisions out. And my gut response is, how do you control how many dogs on a given day? If it just gets out of control that he's got a busy weekend, it's Memorial Weekend or something, and he makes exceptions, or extra loud dogs, or one particular dog that keeps getting out or something. But would I want this in my neighborhood? Yeah. As soon as I heard this was a thing, like you, I'm like, whoa, I didn't know that was a thing. Like, I don't like the idea of leaving my dog at the vet's office where nobody's there all night. So, to know that it's a family business, to know that there's neighbors that are interacting with the pets, like, that starts to come down to common sense stuff. Like, a home-based business that's working for a family, working for a neighborhood, and increases overall wellness, it kind of just gets in the way of, this seems like bureaucracy. But it's there because we're trying to protect neighbors if it's not working well. So, I don't know. Sometimes we make sacrifices for good ideas, and we deal with the noisy dog, and other times, we're not willing to tolerate that. So, I'm just stuck in that space of, it definitely, it definitely could go wrong, and it's hard that there's been a lot of investment upfront before that conversation from the city's angle here of, wait a second, we might have to put the brakes on, is happening. But I overall definitely like the idea of supporting this type of business if it stays small enough in a neighborhood. So, that's my thought.
I have a question. If an intensive home occupation, conditional use permit or permit is not allowed this evening, the owner, the applicant, has a kennel license. What specifically is the owner, the applicant, allowed to do with a kennel license?
Maintain up to ten dogs at that location, but not in, not as part of a for-profit business operation.
So, he could have, he could have a family member who says, "I want to leave my dog with you as long as there was no money exchanged," or a neighbor who said, "I want to leave my dog with you as long as there was no money exchanged." The kennel license stays. And the kennel license evidently allows the outside use of your property for the dogs? Is that correct?
I, I'm not familiar with it, but it's certainly, the conditions of a CUP would not apply.
Right, right. I understand that.
I would just comment to, I mean, I've never been involved in this before, but the building inspector is one that has to do one of the inspections. And for him, since he's been here, he's dealt with three other kennel situations, and all three of those, it was just people that wanted to have more than four of their own dogs. There was no boarding involved. There was no breeding, selling puppies. They just wanted to have a certain number of dogs that required that license and that inspection. So, there was no business aspect of that situation. So, in this case, he's already got the kennel license, so if he wants to have more than four of his own dogs, he is allowed to do that. We're not gonna, if this is denied, we're not gonna take that away from him. He still has that right.
And if those dogs have babies, and he takes the babies off the property and sells them, then he is not conducting his home, he's not conducting business on his property?
Correct.
Well, that, I sound like the cynical lawyer, but we have to be careful. I mean, you know, if you breed them at one location, and you show them at that location, and you keep all your books at that location, but you sort of drive it down the road for the sale, that would still be a violation.
Practically, if he owns four dogs and he's breeding, he may go over the ten.
Well, you can until they're six months old. I mean, you could have, you could have forty dogs, I guess, if you had that many puppies, right? I mean, you could have...
You can have a litter.
You could have only one at a time. There's no kennel, I mean, there's no...
The number doesn't kick in until over five months of age.
Over five months of age. So, you could have multiple litters of puppy. You could have five female dogs who all had their litter of puppies at the same time, not that you'd want to. I mean, that would be a nightmare for the person, but, I mean, it would be permitted, I mean, in, with the license. So, Ken, I was, I was on your page when we started this, and, but I just, this whole number B1 here, where it says, "Home occupation shall be conducted only within the enclosed area of the dwelling unit or garage." It seems like if we issued this, we would be ourselves violating a law, or violating our code. And like I said, I didn't read one through nine. I'm sorry. I started with the others. I should have read the little paragraph.
Any other council discussion?
Well, I'm gonna continue to be very clear, and this is my problem, since, I don't know if you know, but my son's a vet, and he was very clear on this. You have to have outdoor air and sunshine time with your dogs. And so, it's a difficult thought to have them sitting in a garage and consider that outdoor air and sun time. So, that is gonna be my number-one concern. Puppies, you know, they, short period of time in the home, then they're sold. But adult dogs need to have, this is what I'm gonna say, sunshine time and fresh air. And I don't know, and Ken, fortunately, has gone and toured this facility. Where are the dogs gonna be? One at a time? I don't know what's gonna be happening there.
Well, the problem is, is our zoning code says that it's not possible to put them out.
I guess, maybe...
I mean, it's not that, I don't think it's the, the owner wouldn't want to.
If I could offer, I guess if you're inclined to want to move forward, to allow Mr. Winch to be able to proceed with his business, perhaps you could direct us to go back, and we could spend some more time looking at the code and trying to figure out a way to be able to amend it in some way to, to make this allowable.
Well, this is my preference. My preference would be simply to say that we approve of it as far as a concept, and that the city work on it and see if there is some answer to it.
With a one-year trial, with an expiration date. I don't see issuing the, issuing any permit that, based on the fact that if it's issued, it's for the property, and it stays with the property always, and if somebody else buys it, which, and I know there's no thought of selling it, but, you know, who knows five, ten, twenty years down the road what happens, and that stays with that property, I think we have to have an expiration date so that there is, because you can't, you can't, after you issue it, then say, "Oh, I guess we should've."
All right.
So, are you, are you suggesting, Karen, that we table it and direct this?
And direct, give it back to staff?
Yeah, table it and send it back to staff.
A time period?
All right, before we, before we make that motion, we do have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote on that first.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now, common council action. So, we were in the middle of discussion about tabling it, perhaps?
Is a month a reason, is a month a reasonable amount of time to try to work something through? Two weeks? You tell us. Two weeks or a month? I mean, two weeks sometimes flies by pretty fast, especially if you have snow and cold and...
Well, I'm sitting here thinking the long list of changes that I already have in front of the plan commission regarding conditional uses and other changes, and I don't know how long it's gonna take them to get through that. I mean, we can certainly add whatever potential changes to that, but I think...
But this may be, Karen, are you suggesting a, not necessarily a total zoning code rewrite, but to look at this maybe from a different angle and...
To be honest, you know, we'll have to sit down and confer with the attorney to kind of figure out what approaches might be available to us. So, perhaps we can report back to you in two weeks and give you a better idea of how long it will, what would be involved and how long it might take.
Okay, so I move to table for two weeks. Bring it back March 12th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We're going on to the second public hearing this evening. Ordinance 1904, zoning amendment, Arlo Limited Occupancy Overlay District, 545 West Adams Street.
Okay, in September, the council approved a plan development for the property at 545 West Adams Street. If you recall, it was for a construction of a three-unit apartment building on that property. And that was approved with some conditions, with one of them being that the Arlo Limited Occupancy Residential Overlay District, that designation be placed on that property. So, I'm following through with meeting that condition, going through the process of having that designation placed on, on this particular property. Just to reiterate that, that designation puts a restriction or a limit on the number of unrelated individuals that can reside in a dwelling unit within that district. It's basically a maximum of two unrelated, and then there are some exceptions for family situations. But if you recall, also, the applicant or the property owner regarding that development had no objections to this request either, so we're basically just following through with the standard, or the designate, the condition that the council had placed on that approval. Staff recommends approval, and the plan commission also recommended approval. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? All right, applicant statement is actually, in this case, the city. Public statements in favor? Public statements against? Public statements in general? Council discussion? Anybody have any questions or comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Nothing about parking?
No, no, no parking.
No. Yeah, you'll be next. All right. So, the motion to close the public hearing, we have a motion and a second, I think. Yes?
I didn't hear the second.
Ken? And we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Common council action.
We approve ordinance 19.04, which will place the Arlo Limited Occupancy Residential Overlay District designation appropriate at 545 West Adams Street.
Second.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. Council minutes from the February 12, 19 regular meeting, payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, although there are definitely some openings, Board of Review, zoning Board of Appeals, also the Senior Citizen Commission on Aging. And also in our packet licenses, one-year and two-year operator license to sell and serve alcohol. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is citizens' comments, observations, or petitions, if any. So, we do have one person who's asked to speak this evening, so if you could come up to the podium again, give your name and your address. You limit your conversation or your comments to five minutes, please.
Yeah, it'll be brief. I'm sorry. My name is Angela Jones. Again, I'm at 210 North Bonson Street. I've never done anything like this, come to a city meeting, nothing. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I actually found out that you guys were having the meeting today while I was looking online at the platvillecity.org website on how to, like, I don't know, find out how to petition the city for a better safety structure of the crosswalks on Main Street, or something of the nature. I am a single mom of three small kids, and I work at Yield Tattoo Shop. They're on, they're on Main Street. After school, my boss, his daughter Kyra, and my three kids walk, and they cross on Main Street. Normally, this isn't a problem. However, over the past course of three weeks, three weeks, I personally have almost been hit by a vehicle five times. Today, while me and my daughter, because she stayed behind with me because I was still working a little bit, my babysitter took my other two boys home. Today, while we were crossing in front of Badger Brothers, there were no cars coming. There were no cars coming. But I had to pull her by the back of her backpack and throw her behind me because a truck pulled off and just kept speeding because his face was buried in his phone. It took me screaming and him locking up on his brakes. He stopped three inches from me. My daughter's best friend and her mom were on the other side of that street, and they were screaming too. I have no idea if he heard me yelling at him, and that's why he stopped, or if he just looked up and he stopped. But there was no car when we started crossing that crosswalk, and my, me and my daughter almost became hood ornaments. There are multiple children that walk through Main to get home. We don't have a bus system that does city pickups. You have to go to the middle school, or the elementary school, or the high school, just to be able to get your kid to school. What about after school? Those are the drop-off points, too, if they live in town, and they have to cross a major street. We don't have cross guards up there. We have citizens, pardon my, pardon the quotations, who are supposed, and operators of vehicles that are supposed to be paying attention to the law, which means pedestrians in the crosswalk. We have a problem with technology in people's hands where they just don't do that anymore. And in Dodgeville, I believe, and I'm not from here, they have this cool little system where they have neon orange flags. I'm willing to start a fundraiser if we need money to do that. I don't care. The life of my kid is a little bit more than anything that the city can't afford. I am willing to do fundraisers. I'm willing to work for the city, like, in exchange for, like, any type of help getting these put up. If it, like, I will construct PVC piping. I will put all the neon orange flags together. Somebody will put them up for me. All the kid has to do is grab an orange flag while they cross, cross the crosswalk. Not even children, elderly women, elderly men, like, senior citizens, people with disabilities, anybody. Just grab one. You become a lot more visible. People should slow down. When I called, and they also said that they didn't have a camera that might be able to catch that, because the only thing I didn't catch about the truck was the license plate. I caught the make, caught the model, I caught the color. I described the cap on the truck to a T. But, I mean, if she was walking by herself, she's lower than the hood of that truck. And that's, that's just a concern for me as a parent. People just go really fast down Main, a lot. People don't pay attention to people in the crosswalk. I guess I just want more visibility for people in the crosswalk.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Let's see if we can follow up on that a little bit.
Thanks for bringing your daughter. Can we respond?
Actually, I think that we'll have city staff talk about it and see if there is. I know, I think at the crosswalk at Lancaster, perhaps, they now have, Howard, you probably know something about this. I think I remember reading that they have flags at the intersection by, on the way to Westview School.
I think the Transportation Committee has talked about this already.
The Safe Routes Committee has, has been working with the school district on this, and the school district purchased flags, and the city made and put up the holders for them. There's one set out by Westview School, crossing Camp Street by Holman, and then just... There's one set out by Westview School, crossing Camp Street by Holman, and then just recently, they put up a bunch of flags and holders at the Madison and Water intersection.
How did they decide how many they were putting up, and do they have, like, future sites to consider?
Safe Routes is looking at different options on that. We're looking at all that sort of thing. We worked with representatives from the school district, and they purchased flags. I'm not sure how many are at each location. One caveat that I would like to mention is that soon after the ones at Madison and Water were put up, they disappeared, and they were recovered sometime later through the efforts of our police department.
So has the Safe Routes Committee discussed Main Street at all, Howard, in terms of traffic or pedestrians or...
I'm actually the staff liaison now for Safe Routes, and we haven't been talking about Main Street in the few months that I've been here. It's possible that it's come up before, and if we put this back on, so we can discuss it.
This is very common in communities that I travel to and through on a daily basis. And frankly, sometimes it's very hard, even if you're not on your phone, sometimes the kind of clothing that people are wearing, or just doesn't, doesn't stand out very much, and certainly an orange flag is pretty visible. So is it appropriate for Safe Routes to discuss it, or is that more of a Main Street thing?
It's appropriate to bring it up for Safe Routes. I remember it coming up when I first started, and the idea of even radar, which has been done before, putting the radar...
Their speed, yeah, radar for the speed, yep.
But even discussing having a more permanent one, as opposed to one that can travel around at times. But of course, budget has a lot to do with that.
All right, if the council is in agreement, let's have Safe Routes take a look at it and see what we can come up with. All right. All right, we're going on to reports in the packet. Licensing Committee, Nichols, Francis, or Sharp? Any comments?
Nothing, ma'am.
Platteville Public Transportation Committee, Doss?
Nothing, because we'll have more information later.
Plan Commission, Doss?
Nothing.
Airport Commission, Doss?
Nothing.
Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
All right, then, we're on to action items. The employee handbook revision.
So at the last meeting, I reviewed the staff notes, which highlighted the substantial policy changes included in the revised handbook, and you all have that. There were some questions that came up at the last meeting, and from a couple of council members in, over the past couple of weeks. And in the updated staff note, you can see there that there's a summary of edits that were made as a result of those questions with, with feedback from our Labor Legal Council, and those were all included in the harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy, and those are listed there. The only other change was a minor change on page seven, under personnel file access, city clerk was corrected to city manager. If, you also received the opinion of Labor Legal Council related to some of the questions that were raised, and hopefully you've had a chance to review that, so if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and we also have our city attorney here, who will probably be better equipped to answer them.
Any questions, anyone?
Thank you for forwarding the legal opinion, that was very helpful.
I brought up a question about the 10 days, and my question this evening is, what if somebody comes in after 10 days, say it's 20 days, six months, and has a credible situation that the person describes? What will the person be told as far as any action that might be taken?
I'm sorry, I'm...
That's okay.
I didn't, I just don't know what the 10 days is you're referring to.
Sure. So within the grievance procedure, there is a number of steps which are compliant with the state statutes. The state statutes actually lay out these requirements for a grievance procedure to be part of city policy. And the first step on page 10 of the handbook in the grievance procedure requires that an employee must prepare and file a written grievance with their department director within 10 business days of when the employee knows or should have known of the events giving rise to the grievance. And I would say, you know, just generally, that, that in typical types of grievance situations, the employee would, would know of the grievance and would be able to file that grievance within the 10 business days. If it's a criminal matter, then it gets referred to law enforcement, and so then there's, there would be a different procedure set outside of the employee handbook that would, that would govern being able to come for something that was more serious than a typical employee grievance.
I guess I would add that, I would say the grievance procedure would not be available to that employee. That doesn't mean that management couldn't address whatever the issue was that the employee was bringing forward.
Well, I asked the question about at-will, what that meant, and it seems to me that in a situation if somebody, say, is 20 days late, six months late, whatever you want to call it, as far as late in quotations, that staff, or you, as an example, city manager could look at the situation, and you could do your own, when I say own, you could bring about investigation, study of the issue, what is, what's occurring, what has occurred. So that with the at-will, as far as public employees here at-will, the person, if it's serious enough, the person could be terminated as far as employment here. Otherwise, you could do that. Otherwise, you, in other words, to me, it seems to me, it's a, it's a way to cover those situations where a person has not met the 10 days, and the situation is credible as far as the person coming with the complaint.
Are you suggesting, Ken, that if somebody didn't come within 10 days, if they came in 15 days, that because of our at-will policy, that they would be terminated for doing that?
No, 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 I'm...
I'm just trying to figure out how these...
What I'm suggesting here is that the city manager has the authority to look at individuals as far as their performance, at the city staffs, city employees.
If a grievance is filed untimely, the employee has no right to continue to pursue that grievance. However, the city management is free to waive that. If something comes in in 15 days and it is found to be credible, the city, not only is it the city's right, it's incumbent on management to investigate that. So I would think of that 10-day limitation as something that if the, if the employee wants to assure themselves that the grievance procedure will be followed, it's incumbent on them to meet those deadlines. But that's not, that's not preclusive or binding on the city. The city can certainly investigate things beyond the 10 days.
Well, that was basically my question. Thank you.
Any other questions on the handbook revision? Hearing none is...
I had some questions.
Oh, you have more questions? Okay.
I had a question. Way at the end.
Could you, yeah, tell us the page, Ken, that you're looking at, that would be helpful.
It's the policy, is that 216 or 1116, whatever it is? I'm looking at the resolution, number 1901.
On pages...
And then I'm, I've turned through the policy, 1116, I'm on the third page, it's page three of five.
So the resolution is a separate action, but this is included in the handbook, so under the handbook agenda item, we could discuss it.
It's not in, not in the handbook, but going back, there is information about, Appendix D is in the handbook.
Yes, that's what I was trying to...
That's what we're going to be voting on first.
Right.
And Appendix D is saying basically the same thing as the resolution, so should I wait on the resolution?
No, I was just, I was just saying that the resolution itself is a separate action item, but, but because the policy that you're referencing is also included in the handbook, I was just saying that it's still appropriate to discuss it under the handbook agenda item.
Okay, so I'm on page three of five, and I did look at procedures there, and I asked about what the definition was for an office holder. Now, an office holder, it says, is an, these are individuals elected to serve, this is on page two of five, individuals elected to serve in public office as council members, and those persons appointed to serve on a commission or committee. So this means that all the people, am I correct, all the people that serve on a committee or commission or board are going to be subject to this.
Yes.
Even though they do not sign the employee handbook. They're not at-will employees, they do not sign it.
That's true, but they would be subject to the policy as it would be a standalone administrative policy, which is the resolution and separate policy item next on the agenda.
Okay, then going to procedures on three, five, I asked about, under procedures, that office holder be added to that first paragraph where it says, "Any employee," and then it's added, "or office holder experienced or observing harassment," and so forth, that be added. And I also asked that it be added for the second paragraph, but it was not added to the second paragraph.
So...
Well, what's significant in the, between the first paragraph and the second paragraph is that in the first paragraph, it says that you're supposed to go and talk to the person that has done the offensive behavior, whatever you want to call it, and then to keep good information on it. But then, my question is, what happens to that? And then, then going to the second paragraph, it says that you can bring these things, any employee can bring these things to the city manager, and the list is there, common council president, chief of police, city attorney, if such conduct is engaged in by the city manager. And the third bullet point, common council president or city attorney, if such conduct is engaged in by a council member or office holder. So my question is, who can the office holder go to, whether it's a council member, or it's a member of a board or commission, when that person has been offended, whatever you want to use for a word, by an employee of the city of Platteville?
So, yes, sir. So to answer that, I had sent out an email with an attachment that had the updated paragraph, which was at your request, which Labor Legal Council had reviewed and updated. And so after, in that same section on page three of five in the policy, it would be under the sentence, under the bullet points, and it was in red ink. I don't know if you saw that, I have a hard copy here I can provide to you.
Do you have that?
But, I'm sorry?
No, we're just...
Do you have, did you see the handout that had the red font that was in an email that was sent out right after our conversation that day last week? I suspect that you may be...
Okay, this is, um...
Let me read...
This is underneath procedures?
Yes, so it reads...
But it says underneath, are you looking at the third bullet point?
No, I'm looking at a new paragraph that was added after our conversation, and it reads as follows. An office holder with a complaint of harassment, discrimination, or retaliation based on protected status against another office holder should report the incident to the common council president or city attorney. An office holder with a complaint of harassment, discrimination, or retaliation based on protected status against a city employee or third party should report the incident to the city manager or city attorney.
Okay. I don't have that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So when we have a motion to approve this, that should be noted, that that information is included if that's the wish of the council?
And that is in the, the packet? It's, it's in the handbook that's, that you have as part of your packet for tonight, yes?
But it didn't come out in, in the mail. My, I received my packet on Thursday.
I also have it in hard copy form here, if you'd like a hard copy.
Anyway, I missed that one. Okay, thank you, that is helpful.
All right, any other questions regarding the employee handbook revision?
I move approval of the employee handbook revision.
Second? Second? And we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 1901, adopting administrative policy 1116, harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy.
So as we just discussed, this is the, this is the action item requested to adopt the same policy as a standalone policy that would be part and included in the city's administrative policies. And so because, because it does reference office holders, then our attorney had advised us that we needed to adopt this through a resolution.
Any questions, anyone?
And so we would be adapting the same policy for harassment and respectful behavior as is included in the handbook.
That's correct, yes.
Not necessarily included in the packet.
I may have misspoke. It was sent out on Thursday afternoon, but I think it was separate than, than the packet because the packet had already gone out that morning.
I do have one question. I brought this up two weeks ago. What about the situation if a citizen, a resident of the city of Platteville, is retaliated by an employee? I guess I'm asking the city attorney that question. Does that citizen resident have any recourse? In other words, the employee is doing something that's related to his work, her work, and it's done to the citizen, and it's a form of retaliation. Does this, does this citizen, the resident, have any rights as far as going to the city and saying, "This is what happened"?
Yes. Yeah, I haven't, I didn't draft your, your employment manual, but in, in most cases, if a city employee acting in the scope of their employment, does something offensive to a citizen, a non-employee citizen, that citizen would certainly have the right to file a complaint with the city. The city could take disciplinary action against the employee. It would not change things just because the victim, if you will... if you will, were a citizen as opposed to employee, an employee. The city would still have the ability to take disciplinary action against that employee. The only thing that would really, well, not really change, but the citizen could then also pursue civil litigation against the city because if the employee was acting in the scope of their employment, there would be some potential liability on the city's part for the actions of its employee.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy? All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution, correct?
Resolution 1901, okay.
As amended, as written.
A second?
I second.
All right, we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 1903, adopting the Wisconsin Municipal Record Schedules.
Nothing has changed from when it was on information discussion before you last time. It's still the same. So the Wisconsin Historical Society, along with the approval of the Public Records Board, has recently updated the Wisconsin Municipal Record Schedules. On August 27th of 2018, the updated record schedule provides guidance to city staff of proper amount of retention time as well as how to dispose of the records once the retention time has expired. We did, I did reach out to attorney Bill Cole, and he did draft, at my request, an ordinance, which is also before you. We have applied for and received approval from both the Wisconsin Historical Society as well as the Public Records Board Executive Secretary to move forward with this, which is why it's before you now. And we are proposing, staff is supporting, that we adopt the following records. It's the Wisconsin Municipal Record Schedule, the Administrative and Related Record Schedules, the Budget and Related Record Schedules, Facility Management and Record, excuse me, Related Record Schedules, Fleet and Aircraft Management Record Schedules, Human Resources and Related Record Schedules, Payroll and Related Record Schedules, Purchasing and Procurement Record Schedules, Risk Management and Related Record Schedules, and the Wisconsin Public Libraries and Public Library Systems and Related Record Schedules. Do you guys have any questions on that?
Questions, anyone? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve ordinance 1903, adapting records retention schedules.
Second. A second, and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is contract 719, street maintenance.
Yes, this is our annual street maintenance contract for thin overlays on selected streets. We budgeted $120,000 from the wheel taxes. We have one bidder, Iverson Construction. And our plan is to do the 2018 thin overlay streets that were delayed last year due to weather, along with the 2019, prior to the end of June. There was a slight increase in the price. Staff is recommending certain streets as listed. We're recommending that we delete the last four items. You can see them on the list as crossouts. And I have a map showing where those street locations are, not only for the 2019, but the 2018 that are still to be done. The contract amount would be 122,670.05. And staff is recommending that we absorb the difference, that $2,000, $2,600 difference in our street reconstruction budget. So recommend award with that amount.
Question, the four that you're crossing out, that's to save on budget, or is there some other reason?
It's budgetary only. I normally add a few just in case the prices come in lower than expected so that we can get a few more done, but it's budgetary reason only.
So then I have a question. On the thin overlay street list from 2018, you crossed Union Street from Hickory to Perry.
That one was a mistake. That one would have been done a couple of years previously.
Okay, so that wasn't crossed because it?
That wasn't crossed necessarily because of budget. It was an error on my part for including that. And that's why it didn't show up on the 2019.
Yeah, I was looking for it on the 2019 list after it had been crossed from the 2018 list.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion?
Now, just a minute. This $120,000 is for this year's streets. Did we hold over the money for the 2018 streets so it's actually additional to $120,000, or what happened?
That is the plan. We haven't actually done the carryovers yet. We're still in the process of finalizing the 2018 books, but the carryover will come before the council in a later meeting in the next few weeks, month.
So does this spend 2018 and 2019 amount? Or is this spending only 2018? Or is this spending only 2019?
So it would spend what was not spent in 18. It would spend that, and it would also spend 2019.
This contract is only for 2019 funds. As Nicola said, you approve the 2018, but here in a subsequent meeting, you will need to approve the carryover of those funds to actually do those this year. But this action only talks about the 2019 budget and budget year.
And we had a, we have already approved the cost for the 2018.
Yes, you did that in late 2018, but we.
And it will not increase because we accepted that contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve contract 719 for street maintenance. The 2019 thin overlays, as per noted, at 122. I lost my place.
600.
122, 670.09, with the balance over coming from the street CIP budget.
Second. Okay, we have motion, a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that's all the action items. We'll go on to information and discussion. Ordinance creating a formal committee for the Platteville Public Transportation Committee.
All right, the purpose of the Platteville Public Transportation Committee is to develop and promote a system of public transportation in various modes to support the needs of residents and University of Wisconsin Platteville students, particularly handicapped and other disadvantaged populations within the city. The Public Transportation Committee has been an ad hoc committee since 2016. Considering the committee continues to discuss bus routes, fares, and other operational details, staff recommends creating a formal committee. At the February 14th, 2019 meeting, the Public Transportation Committee made a motion to recommend approving the draft ordinance to create the formal committee. And you do have the draft ordinance available for you. Any questions on that one?
What can be listed in the code book? What's going to be listed in the code book? Is that the idea?
Correct.
All right. We'll come back next time. Platteville Public Transportation Update.
So yes, we do a year-end update. And so the mission of the taxi and bus service is to provide public transportation for all citizens of Platteville. The transportation system is comprised of two services, a bus system and a shared ride taxi service. During the University of Wisconsin Platteville academic year, the bus has three routes that operate on a 30-minute loops. Riders access the bus service at specified stops. The city has a contract for bus service operation with Stratton Bus, Inc. The shared ride taxi service provides door-to-door on-call service. Riders are picked up at their homes and delivered to the door of their destination. Although stops for other riders may be made en route. The city has a contract for the shared ride taxi service with Running, Inc. The city receives an annual grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation that provides both state and federal funding for transit operations. UWP also contributes to the cost of transit operations, and the UWP students ride the system for free. The taxi and bus service have seen a continual increase in ridership since 2015. The attachments illustrate more information on this. I do plan to go a little bit into that. The expected annual ridership of the shared ride taxi is $35,000, and the expected annual ridership of the bus service is $56,000. And then, as I stated, the attachments have a couple of just illustrations to show, since 2015, we've had a 10% increase in bus rides. We've had a 948% increase for our 65-year-olds, 65-year-olds riding since 2015. That's because it went from 25 to 262 in our last year. Accomplishments that we've had, we did adjust a stop. We removed Country Kitchen, and we've added Aldi, and that did not take place until November. We've had more people using the Aldi stop in two months than Country Kitchen for the entire year previous to that. We have submitted grant requests for replacement bus using 5311 funds. We have not received any information on that yet. We also created a new transfer process to reduce costs for riders, and that has seen use also since November. So for our 2019 activities, in January of 2019, we've had $500 worth of bus passes sold compared to only 75 in January of last year. I'm not sure if that's going to continue, but it was a different increase since last year. We will be changing a bus stop name. The Platteville Public Library stop will be renamed to Claire Bank. And Claire Bank is aware of this, and they approve of the change. Considering the new location of the library, it was appropriate to rename the stop. We do have a survey that went live today. It's available, paper copies at the hospital, the library, the senior center. It's also available online to take that. I believe there's already been a social media post on it, or they could call, and I can give more information about the survey. A couple of things we're working on because we're trying to increase awareness of the bus among non-UWP students, is a Ride the Bus for Free Day in late May. We're still finalizing the details, but we're hoping to have perhaps regular riders help guide new riders and show them how to use the bus. Sometimes people aren't aware of how to use the bus, and this will help reduce confusion. Having the bus in the parade, also giving a little more public awareness on that. And then with the taxis, it's had a 20% increase in rides since 2015. Numbers are provided. And we've requested to increase taxi service hours from 13,000 to 14,000 with our grant, and we're still waiting to hear back from that also. So that's just a little bit of update for 2018, and then our activities for 2019.
I have a question, excuse me. Back on the first page, as far as the bus, replacement bus. What are 5311 funds? Where are they located? Who are they from? Who are they from?
State, federal, sorry.
Technically, it's federal funding, but it's through the state program. 5311 is a federal program that's administered by the state DOT.
So the federal government doles out money to the state?
Correct.
Okay. And this is a yearly thing, so they keep up, try to keep up with buses, and there's taxis in there too?
Yes.
That's a different spot, pot of money, but yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Nice to see all the numbers are going up, and that's a remarkable increase over 65-year-old ridership.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
A second? A motion, a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.